So if there's time, we can just mention that, and if not, we can wait till next week. We're going to have more information. Here, it's a discussion of businesses that can apply to private property owners as well. Does not apply only to businesses and to...
It's because I'm Gary Frays' question. This is only applied to a business.
All right. Good evening. We're ready to start our meeting, our select board meeting. Hi Ruth. Just to point out, we have Charlotte on this evening, Mario De Petrio, Pat and Dick. How you doing, Dick?
Fine.
And that's it for here. And here we have Dennis and Ruth, hang on, Indrick. And we have in the back there Adam and Gary and Richard. Hi, Richard. All right, we are recording, just so everybody knows. I'd like to begin with Lawrence, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll number 45 for $1,886.97. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable number 46 for $6,906.09. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, and we, for the Zoom audience, we just had John Henderson join us. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 30th, 2023 board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, since I knew we were going to have some special guests today, we're going to start, and I'll just quickly go down the list of what we have here, just our updated version, Christine's kept changing today. The right committee update from Richard, then we'll have the NOAA grant opportunity with Ruth and Dennis, and then the planning board update with John Henderson, and then we'll go on to our normal citizens issues, roads and those kind of things, if that's okay with everybody. Is that okay? All right. Okay, so we're going to start with the right committee. And Richard, I had asked you about the float and ramp, since we're not using...
Yeah, one of the things we have been looking at is that the past few years, we haven't had any ice. So what we're proposing is that we don't pull the floats this year, that we just leave them out. If we start to see ice forming, then we would take the last two out and pull them to the north of the current boats and tie them off there.
Richard, is there anything that could damage the floats besides ice flows? So being in the water all year round doesn't, won't damage the materials?
You know, we haven't ever had the top two out, ever. And so, and they're still in good shape. So it's, I don't say that, you know, we haven't ever made any repairs to them other than sometimes the screws come out for the bumpers, and so then we just replace those screws, and we can do that, you know, even when they're, you know, not pulled out.
If you decided that you did need to pull them, let's say in January, do you have some resources identified that could do that for us?
Well, Mike has the GND backhoe, and I would approach him to come and pull them out.
Okay, so there's still a GND piece of equipment.
Right.
But what should we be looking down the road to something besides that, unless they're going to be, Mike's going to be continuing the business?
Oh, we'd have to go find somebody else. You know, I think he'd have his, you know, we could probably hire him to do it.
Also, I think it's having some, so that you got, on short notice, you know you've got somebody to call.
Yep. Well, I'll get ahold of Mike and make sure that, you know, he would be available.
I'm wondering, Richard, about just getting a second opinion to confirm, you know, that it will be okay to do that. I'm thinking somebody like Ted Christie or somebody who, you know, knows ducks and ramps and stuff. I'm, you know, when I saw your message...
Yeah, have him weigh in on the subject.
I think our harbor master Wayne sounds like it would make sense.
Yeah, because I left mine out one year, and it was completely destroyed. It just, between the snow, it was more snow than anything else, and, you know, I'm pretty protected. And so, I know you're out there, and I know the ice doesn't, you know, it doesn't freeze, it doesn't freeze at my place either, but, and I'm right down the road from you. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to say, yes, I think that's a great idea. I don't know if these two would want to, but I feel like if we could talk to Ted...
Yeah, talk to Ted, that'll be a good...
Would you like me to do that?
Sure.
Okay. I will do that.
You're going to do that? You want me to get ahold of him?
I can do that.
Okay.
I'll try to do that in the next year, too, to let you know what happens. Yep. While we have you, though, Jeff, do you want to go ahead and ask?
Well, I was going to say, I was looking at Richard, like, you want to talk about the roof, or do you want to hold off?
I haven't gotten any, you know, estimates yet. Well, I got one estimate, but it was, you know, sort of iffy kind of estimate, but it was $22,000. But it was from airy metal roof, and they're pretty pricey. But, you know, the quality of their shingles is higher than what we could get from loads. But, you know, I want to, the other thing I want to do is get some samples from, from lows of what we might purchase, because you can get the 30-year, the 50-year warranties. And I went on Consumer Reports and, you know, found out which ones are the, have the highest Consumer Report numbers, and, you know, they're $95 a square. The interesting thing, the next one recommended was $110 a square, but, so it's a...
Do you need other estimates?
Yeah, we got to get two more estimates.
Okay, because I used a fellow named Alan Teale out of Bristol, I think it is. Bristol, Abrahams, somewhere down there. You might want to check him out. I really liked his work, and he, he stands behind what he does. So his name is Alan Teale, T-E-E-L-E. And if you do a Google...
Alan Spear?
Teale.
Teale?
Uh huh, T-E-E-L-E.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other one I'm looking at is Ken Parson, Nancy Parson had somebody do their roof, and they really did a nice job on it, and they were, you know, quite reasonable, so... You know, it's, you're going to be architectural shingles with ice and snow shield for sure. We, since there's only one layer of singles on there, we could just do, you know, the ice and snow shield right over the old single and put another layer on there, which would certainly reduce the cost.
So, considering it's now November, you're not looking to have anything done before spring?
Right.
Probably nobody's available anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so you'll give us an update later when you get a couple more estimates?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, and I'll let you know about Ted.
Okay.
Just a second. All right, let's go on to Ruth Endrick and Charlotte. That is I-N-D-R-I-C-K, and I'll let her explain where she's from, and I'll let her and Dennis talk about the grant opportunity. So take it. Ruth?
Okay, so I work at the Kennesaw National Trust. I work at KELT, Kennesaw National Trust, and I had heard from Dennis and Richard about the project that the town had funded to focus on the Swan Creek crossings and the Keel Pond crossing. So, right now, there is a very large grant opportunity available from NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. So it's a grant that's focused on increasing the resilience of roads while also improving habitat. And so, we can ask for anywhere from $1 to $25 million, and I think there are a lot of small roads like that in the region that can be bundled into a package. And so I've started working, there are a couple sites in Erasick. There's a site in Pittsburgh, a site in Georgetown, and I think the Swan Creek site. It would be really great to put into a package where all of these would be improving passage for fish, it'd be improving the health of the marshes, and they'd also be improving the roads to be more resilient to sea level rise and flooding. So, I wish that Dennis learned more about where their project is at. And so this is, creating this bundled grant package would be, we can ask for the next, potentially the next steps of the road project at Swan Creek. So it sounds like the current grant is funding modeling, like monitoring, modeling, and preliminary design, and so in this NOAA grant, we could ask for final design and construction costs.
Wow.
And there's no match required. It's, we wouldn't need leveraging, and there are, like, we wouldn't, well, we don't even need leveraging, but I think we could get it because there's some project that DOT has lined up in Erasick that are a couple million dollars. So I think that, I think we could put together, I'm working on putting together a very strong proposal, fingers crossed. But, so I guess I'm here tonight to see if the town is interested in adding this crossing and would probably include in the application or consider including the one, the crossing at Swan Creek, as well as the crossing of Post Office Road, that next step up from there, since makes sense to look at it as a system, and I think the Post Office Road one, I mean, it's, it's a dirt road, so it wouldn't be super costly anyway, and might as well be looked at at the same time. I think, yeah, it seems to line up. So if we receive the grant, it would become available. The funds would become available in November of next year. And then they say that people typically apply for three years with the very easy extension of five years for the project. And so that feels like a good timeframe for going through this first year feasibility. That would be wrapping up right around the time when the grants would come available to work on design for that final design, and then that'd give time for permitting and construction. You know, that seems to line up well.
Wow, seems very serendipitous.
Yes.
With where we are right now.
Yeah.
Dennis, you had anything to add?
Well, one thing I would point out is NOAA's emphasis in these projects is the restoration of the wetlands, the improvement of habitat, of fish passage, and that sort of thing. Our interest is in strengthening the capability of our crossing to accommodate sea level rise and storm surge through the next 75 or 80 years. So our objectives are complementary but not identical. So the one thing I think, as a town, we need to be sure we're comfortable with is the effects of the restoration. What that'll mean is that in the time cycle, there'll be a greater drop on the inland side of Swan Creek and a greater rise. So there'll be more tidal swing, and that might be something that, although it's extremely beneficial for the marsh and the health and the vitality of the infrastructure and accommodating marsh migration and all of those good things, there likely be some people who will wonder, gee, we've got to lose the aesthetics of Swan Creek to some degree at low tide. We really can't answer that question because we hardly even remember what it looked like before the causeway was there. Best I can tell, it was the mid-'50s when we had a trussel-type bridge that crossed it. Bill Hawkins remembers swimming under that when he was a kid. George probably remembers it, but I don't think anybody else will really remember what the aesthetics were. So that's the only downside, there'll be a slight effect on aesthetics, particularly during the transition until the natural brasses recover, restore the sweetgrass and the salt hay and such. Cautionally, it's actually restoring something that was very important in our early years. The native population that came seasonally would encamp on the little island at the mouth of Swan Creek, and the women would gather the sweetgrass to make their baskets. It was a very important cultural place for the natives. And then, of course, when the settlers came, the salt hay was extremely important for feeding their cattle over the winter, and they cherished the salt hay that was there. So we're kind of going back to the way the island was, but will, some people will say you've got to lose a little aesthetics.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, I know that that's the one thing that's slightly out of sync with us. I know you'll be going through the feasibility study for the next year to really have some of those deep conversations as a town about what you're comfortable with, and this would be getting out in front of that slightly. I think, I guess, I'd be, I think we could always tell NOAA, sorry, this project can't be included, but we couldn't add it in later, so I'd be inclined to try to include it now and just highlight that the town, the things the town does care deeply about and knows that they care, you know, you care deeply about, and that we don't, I don't need to say that you've already made a commitment to a certain structure size. I think we'll get cost estimates for a certain structure size. But I can be very clear that the decision of what goes in there is, is under community consideration. I think one thing on top of what Dennis has been talking about, or changes at that site, that I'd be interested in, in thinking more about as the process happens, is just, well, I haven't been to a shellfish committee meeting in a number of years, but last time I went, I feel like that area downstream is one of the most important areas for harvesting. And I wonder if by having an upstream area drain, if that would open up more acres for shellfish. I don't know. Yeah, for cleaning.
Yeah, likely would. It would likely make the beds that are there now healthier because they'll be getting more refreshed nutrients.
Before we say anything, since as road commissioner, I know we've been talking about those areas. Do you have any thoughts about this proposal?
West Coast can auto-aggress even one of them causeways on their own, all I have to add.
Yeah, we've been talking about how much it would cost and how we need...
We can do a little work on the surface, make it look pretty, but we can't afford to get, to do anything structurally, and we know that this, the Hill Cove Causeway has structural issues. So I think...
This would be a great idea.
Yeah, yeah. And the man that handles that kind of stuff will get the right guy in that position. So I think this is a good, a good thing to look into and follow through with.
Jeff, and I just, I'm sorry, I don't think I, I wouldn't be inclined to include Hill Cove just because at that crossing, I don't know if there would necessarily be habitat improvements happening with changes there, and so that might be a better fit for a different funding source. I know that FEMA has...
Still, just taking half of it off the link is, yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yep. Jeff, do you want to comment?
A couple questions. So what would, what's the entity that's making the application?
KELT.
So KELT, so KELT will be the contracting entity, and these are the projects that KELT is saying, we'll use this money for these projects.
Yeah, and I guess we could figure that out in more detail going forward. The town could potentially be the, KELT could contract with the town, and then you could invoice us for contractors that you select to do the work.
Down, down the road.
And it could go in that direction, but yeah, we would, we would hold the federal funds, and if we could either directly contract, I don't know, maybe if there are multiple projects happening in the region, maybe there could be cost efficiencies with hiring one firm. I haven't, I really haven't thought that far.
I've gotten that far, yeah.
But...
But I guess I would say that it would, it would be competitively bid. You know, unlike the discussion we had about the small grant, this would definitely be a competitively bid for both the design and the construction.
And that might be a contractor that the engineering firm, you know, deals with on a regular basis. Yeah, I'm sure Wright Pierce has their own, you know, their own people, and I'm sure they put it up a bid, and they deal with four or five different people. And I think this would be something to the magnitude that you'd need engineering oversight. Actually, maybe they should be contracted to do the whole, take care of the whole thing.
I think I would need, because it's a federal grant, they have a lot of, a lot of restrictions tied in with how you can contract, and so we have to go through a formal bid process. If it's more than $250,000, I think if it's less than, which I'm sure the construction would be, quite a bit, and it's less than, something less than that would be more of a simplified bid process. But more than that, they've got a very rigid structure, but...
That's why I think the engineers would probably have to be involved, so, to some degree, in the bid process and the oversight.
So, well, I was kind of going with it. KELT is the overall arching entity. It's, it's no pain to whisper around. We're benefiting by being, possibly being, having this work done. It's not a done deal. We're not saying, oh, yes, we're absolutely going to do this. We're saying, yes, we agree, this is a good possibility, good thing to get the grant for. You'll still, KELT will still make a decision about whether, and we may do this together, whether we actually want to do it in a way that meets the requirements of the grant.
Yes.
So the town has a chance later down the road to say, no, wait a second, maybe not.
Yes.
But for now, it's an opportunity. And I'm saying this partially to, just to kind of how it gets, gets looked at.
Yeah.
And knowing that we're not taking responsibility at this time, but, but we could be supportive. And do you need some, something from the town indicating our interest in being part of this opportunity?
Yes, I would love a letter of support, and I can work on drafting one.
That would be perfect.
Okay.
Yep.
And I will try to send that by the end of this week, when, giving, who, what's the best?
Select board@whisperisland.us.
Okay.
Yep. Anything you want to comment on? No, everything that was just discussed is what I was going to ask.
I did, but just a question about the process, because it says the funding would be available next fall, the new fiscal year, but when are they going to make a decision?
I don't know. I would assume probably earliest would be spring. But yeah, then there's the getting someone under contract, and, or like, we would have to get under contract with NOAA and go through some of those hoops. So I don't have, I don't recall seeing any really clear information of the date for that.
I, I went through and looked at, and thanks, Dennis, for sending the link. And I saw that the State Planning Office is like the main agency reviewing, I guess, during the initial review of grants. That was one of the things that I noted for the snow opportunity. I guess they have, because at the state level, there's some, some agency for each state, and the State Planning Office is the one for me. So this will be somebody, him, maybe, that can answer questions down the road.
And right now, all we need to do is get the letter of support, and then you said the deadline was November 16th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yep. Either way, it's pretty darn close.
Is there anything else that I can say? These pictures are great because it shows what we had there before. And we're talking about restoration, saying, well, this is actually going back to something like, you know, particularly like we had, you know, 70 years ago. Is there anything else that would be helpful to describe this opportunity or the situation?
That's a great question. Not that I can think of at the moment. We had met with, with Red Peterson, I asked if they could develop a rough, like, funding outline that we can include in, as our cost estimate, and so they said they were happy to put something together. So that will be helpful.
It seems like it'll be helpful to have the, the fact that we just got the grant.
Absolutely.
Because it fits just so nicely. It's not just we need the money, but we already have, we're working on a plan on what that might look like or what we might need, so it seems like the two just... Yeah.
You're doing the first step, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. It's not just, no, we'll gladly take the money, but, but we do, we already have something in place, thanks to Dennis and Dick, something already in place.
Yeah, Wright Pierce is trying to expedite the installation of tile height measuring equipment on either side of the causeway at Swan Creek, and the same with Hill Pond. And I guess KELT is going to put in an instrument down by Post Office Road to see just how far the tide comes up today, which is not really very relevant, but it'll be data. And this will all be good information to include in the grant that KELT is preparing.
Perfect. Great, great. But we so appreciate you thinking about us and willing to include us in that. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. So far, Dennis and Dick have done a good job on getting grants, so let's hope that keeps going. Any comments from anybody to Ruth or Dennis? Nope? All right.
Dick, did you want to say anything, since you're on the line? You did, you'd have to unmute.
I'm, I'm, I'm here.
You're still muted.
I'm in complete agreement with what you have discussed, in that, you know...
You're still muted.
There's no means up there.
His initial study determines...
Oh, wait a minute. Dick, hang on a second. I think I have to unmute you.
Yes, she does.
Technology. It doesn't say. Nope?
Try clicking on that. No, that one's up there.
I did.
It doesn't do any...
And that's, it came up this list.
Sorry, Dick.
Oh, wait a minute. She left. All right, we lost her. Okay, so with that, we'll move forward, and we will definitely respond as soon as we get that.
Thank you so much.
All right, yes. Next, we have a planning board update on LD 2003 by John Henderson. So, John, you have been talking to some people about that, and first, what is LD 2003?
Oh, you don't want to get started.
No, just two minutes, two minutes, no more, no more.
Well, the, you know, the top line view, well, first of all, let me say, I talked to Rich, chairman of the planning board, and let him... Well, the, you know, the top line view, well, first of all, let me say, um, um, I talked to Rich, chairman of the planning board, letting know that I was going to be here and if it came up, I, I give him, uh, share with you all, um, the update. And he was, he was absolutely inclined with that and, uh, endorsed it and supported it. Um, I can't talk about much more. That's why I'm on the planning commission, or the planning board. Cause I missed the last meeting, but, um, we are meeting tomorrow. And we're still working on ordinances, the ordinance overview for all the land use ordinance is not just, uh, what we're working on with LD two thousand and three. But specifically with respect to LD two thousand and three, had a wonderful meeting with Emily at the Lincoln Planning, Lincoln Planning Commission on Thursday. LD two thousand and three is the state statute that was passed, uh, two years ago.
Just a bit.
And it's, it's, uh, coincidentally, or interestingly, part of a national, uh, movement, if you will. Uh, I was aware of a very similar statute that, uh, they tried to pass in Colorado last year, which failed. Uh, and similar statutes being proposed and adopted in other states. And the theme of the, of the, uh, state level legislation is to try to create more affordable housing by, among other things, uh, increasing density, um, at local levels. Um, putting aside whether that's a good idea and putting aside whether, uh, the town should take a position on the concept of that statute. Were on a track of having to comply with the statute deadline of which I believe is July. And so I'm, uh, working on preparing a draft for the planning commission and for you all and everyone else in the town to begin looking at and thinking about in order to comply with the statute and take into consideration our unique community and what we want to try to accomplish with respect to this proposed statute. So I met with Emily for about an hour and a half, close to two hours. Uh, she is a tremendous resource. Um, she's, uh, really busy right now and she appreciated being able to work with one point person. Uh, you know, per your direction and, and, uh, Rich's recommendation. So, uh, I have from her, uh, three buckets of resources. One of which is a statute she's, an ordinance she's working on with Booth Bay, Booth Bay Harbor. And they're getting close to finalizing it. So I'm going to take that work, uh, use it as a, um, starting point. And then, uh, conform a, uh, conform that, those drafts to our ordinances and come up with a draft. I expect that what I come up with is probably only going to be about a third or halfway to the finish line. There's going to be a lot of work, uh, from that point until the end. We have a drafting team, uh, not only myself, but Ralph and Joanna Jacobs and Bob Mooney, who I'll be interacting with, um, as we, uh, as we go forward. Timeline, uh, my, my hope is to have my, a very rough draft ready Wednesday. Um, get it out to Ralph, Joanna and Bob. And I'm guessing probably two weeks back and forth with our drafting team. And I hope to have a final draft that we can publish by the end of the month. The planning board, planning board's meeting is, is on thirteenth of December. It's a possibility. We might have a special meeting before then, but at least by the thirteenth, um, they'll have it in front of them and, uh, they'll work, work on it. And, uh, I can come up with a proposal for the town to consider, um, in anticipation of the, of the July deadline. Um, I, you know, it's important and I, you know, I'm gonna be spending a lot of time giving thought to how to communicate all of this to the town because the statute itself, when you first hear about it, is a little scary. It talks about increasing the density automatically by state statute and doesn't really, well, uh, it, it, it pays some attention to the differences between urban communities like Portland, uh, and rural communities like pretty much the rest of the bank. Um, and we have to, um, uh, find a way to preserve and enhance what we want here while complying with the statute. Um, and, and, you know, that can be done by, probably an educational process. A lot of people aren't going to listen to much after you first tell them the density potential, uh, with this statute. And so we need to, uh, uh, spend a lot of time thinking about how to communicate that so that everyone realizes, um, uh, yeah, this is, uh, not necessarily what we would have come up with on our own, but here's a way to make it, um, consistent with it. And in some ways may actually enhance, maybe ways to actually flip it around and use it to our advantage. So we just have to, uh, uh, spend some time communicating and a lot of transparency about what it means. So that, so I'll be paying a lot of attention to that part of it, uh, once I'm done, uh, drafting.
We so appreciate you working on that because that's a, a huge issue. Um, so, and.
Yeah, so the, the, the ordinance review committee has, has met twice now. And, uh, the first time, um, everyone kind of left with the charge of, of understanding or attempting to understand LD two thousand and three. Um, and this is a, a, a great group of people because they represent different, um, factions of the town. Um, and people that maybe, you know, wouldn't necessarily even know about LD two thousand and three. But what we came up against was, um, a lot of frustration because it's, it's difficult to pin down, you know, the latest, um, updates on what they've changed and, and where the, um, statute lies. So, um, when we discussed it, um, after the last meeting, um, it, it seemed like it would make more sense for the planning board to sort of complete what they had already sort of started on or already worked on with this. And we, we thought that the ordinance review committee could be a good, um, sounding board for a, a, a draft when it does, uh, you know, come about. Um, these are community members that can go and, and, and if they understand it, they can explain it to, um, you know, their people. Um, so hopefully that will materialize and we'll be able to kind of be the sounding board once this, uh, final draft is, is, um, is created. And then that also frees us up to work on some of the other ordinance, um, issues that we wanted to hopefully tackle this year, which was a junkyard ordinance. Um, a, a sort of a road ordinance, um, and, uh, has to do with mostly, uh, driveways. Um, and, uh, business registration on the island. Um, and so those were the ones, that's, those are the things now that we, we've shifted our focus to. And hopefully we can, um, make some, uh, inroads with those ordinances that we're looking at. Oh, and also the, um, the, uh, permitting process for building. We, we really need to look at that, um, look at our, our fee schedule and look at the, um, the way that permits are issued and then how they're followed through, um, to the end. So that's another big one that we need to, um, take on. So grateful that you guys are sort of taking that back and, and doing what you're doing. Cause the other things that we have to work on are pretty important too, for the town.
Yeah, make sure to add, I'm, 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 like you mentioned, uh, I'll be, uh, coordinating with the ordinance committee at the same time or the planning board will be concluding them in that process as well. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want, we want as many eyes on it as we can, as early as we can.
Right.
So, um, I just need.
So it was, it was good that the group sort of, you know, got their feet wet a little bit to understand it and to realize what we're up against.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, feet wet versus cold feet. Good chat.
Well, in regards to that increased density, what is there in the statute that we would be penalized if we didn't do it? You know, just like we're looking at, um, the two referendum questions, seven and eight on Tuesday, where the federal government wants us to change our constitution, which has been working just fine for many, many years. You know, it's, you know, what's penalty if we don't do it?
I think there was another town that, that thought they were gonna just ignore it, um, for, for.
John, do you have a comment on that?
Well, uh, uh, I don't want to give a legal opinion on it because, uh, I think that, uh, it's something that, uh, should be put to, uh, you know, our town attorney when we get to that point. I think it's a bet, a very valid question. I, I think the answer is going to be, if I could, uh, suggest where, where it would end up. Um, I think the answer would be, um, if a developer came to the town and wanted to develop higher density, which is authorized by the statute, and we didn't have any regulations, uh, you would basically get to do whatever you wanted to do. Uh, and there would not be any, any way for the town to regulate that. So, you know, it's not, it's not the governor's gonna send a, a marshal down here and arrest somebody. Uh, but what's going to happen is, uh, developers will run amok and it'll be a lot worse if we don't have.
For instance, the, uh, the alternative dwelling units, um, the state has issued a minimum size of, I think it's a hundred and ninety square feet. But we can set a maximum size. So we have some control over the rules that, that we do have to abide by. Uh, so that's what the, the point of, of doing it is, is like John said, then we, then we can kind of control what we can control.
Right.
John, it is, it is if we do not, uh, adopt or the requirements into our ordinances, our ordinances won't be enforceable. We want to maintain our local control. Unfortunately, we are gonna have to change the way we may not be excited about. To maintain our local control, we have to be compliant.
And we can always make the maximum, if we might.
So, so doing something now is a, is a step in the right direction to train.
Amen.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and Ruth, I just want to say to you, you know, our, our, our meeting is gonna continue on. If you feel like you want to leave. Uh, I know this is all wonderful information, but, but don't feel you have to stay. Um, I'm sure that you probably have a ride home.
I should probably, you know.
Yeah, and, and please be careful of the deer. We are notorious for that. Yeah, be careful.
I haven't been to one of your meetings in, in years ever, so it felt nice to be able to hear some of the conversation too. So thank you very much for letting me come.
Thank you for including us.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yep. Watch the deer.
Thank you.
All right, um, thank you, John. Richard?
Uh, just a couple more issues. Uh, Craig is, and Janet are leaving this weekend. So we're losing them as a mower person. But, uh, Steve across the road from us that just moved into that new house has one like what Craig has. So he has offered to, you know, fill in and help out Craig next year as well. So we've got a backup there, uh, now. And Linda, just wanted to let you guys know that there'll be, we presently have twenty-five, uh, Thanksgiving baskets going out. And they'll go be going out probably this, uh, next, not this coming weekend, no, the next, next.
I think next weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, I met, um, I was down at the Ferry Landing, um, this weekend and, um, I think her name is Hope.
Yes, Stephen Hope.
Yeah, she said, oh, I'd like to help you at the Ferry Gardens. It's like, oh, don't say that twice. So, um, we're definitely gonna add her to our, our list. Yeah.
They're a good addition to our community for sure.
Absolutely. Yep, yep. So that's great. Um, and it's great that Greg, Craig has some backup because I know he's on the road, gone for months at a time. So, yeah, great.
Craig came by the History Center this Sunday and toured the exhibit, spent time in there, uh, getting up the speed on our history.
Good.
Nice, nice. Yep. All right, so while we're on, uh, citizens' issues, um, anyone else have citizens' issues? And it wasn't really an issue. It was just some sharing, which is great.
I'm just have a comment maybe to John on the project you're working. Uh, as you know, the groundwater grant that we have, uh, is gonna be looking in the, in the months ahead. It's gonna be looking at, should there be any adjustments in our ordinances in regards to minimum lot size as it relates to the availability of groundwater as the environment changes? And, uh, in light of that ordinance, uh, the state ordinance, the state requirement, uh, we acquired about a couple of the other towns, how are they dealing with it, that are dealing with similar groundwater issues? Uh, Rossack and Georgetown. And they were apparently, at least one of them has apparently established a requirement that if the parcel is gonna be divided less than the minimum lot size by virtue of these two requirements, that a hydrogeologist certified that the groundwater can support that added density. And that might be worth considering.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because in the statute, it says you just have to prove that you can have access to potable water. But it doesn't prove, doesn't do anything for, you know.
Or getting somebody to certify.
Yes.
They gotta go less than the minimum lot size to certify that there is available, adequate available groundwater.
Right. I like that.
John, in the site plan review, it's a subdivision ordinance, pardon me, there actually is section talking about larger subdivisions where you have to have the hydrogeology analysis done for a subdivision. But some of that same sort of requirement specs maybe could be applied here if you wanted to go that way.
Yeah.
It's Cassid going as an ordinance, well, hydrologist for subdivision. Well, maybe some of their study.
It's on the drawing board.
Some towns require, I believe, some towns actually require a, a, a well on each well as part of the approval of the subdivision to prove that you can have water for each well. That's getting a little out there, but it is a reality.
It, it's pretty much where ours does too, along with the septic capability. So they're there.
Yeah, definitely.
And you give the distances for your septic as well.
So it just shows that it's a viable lot.
Right.
So it needs to be able, your water needs to be able to support a septic system.
Yep. So we'll make it work, Richard. Yep. All right, I'd like to go on to Rose. Um, any updates, Jim?
Uh, as I told you before the meeting, a little patch job down to Junction Road and which is complete, there's another pass job that'll be done on L O E's drug. Similar things, black material. And potholes should be filled on the gravel road this week. There's a tree in question. I got a bucket during the daylight. And I have talked to the bus driver and coordinating between her and our wild contractor. Making sure everybody's got everybody's information, bus schedule, bus route.
Right, right.
Uh, et cetera, et cetera. That's for all I have. The tide's going out at the Doggy Road.
Until the beavers come back.
I'm sure they'll be there tonight. So they'll hear that water roar.
Yep, they can't help it. Yep, yep. All right, thanks for keeping up on that. Um, I don't have anything for correspondence to either of you. Okay, we'll move right along there. We have several admin items. Um, April's not here right now. Uh, I think she's busy with something. I don't know what it is. Could be an election or something like that. Yeah, like starting bright and early tomorrow morning. Um, so I know she's busy with that, but, um, for our December schedule, what we talked about is, um, doing every two weeks. weeks. We want to give Adam and Gary a break. So we're going to move to, you know, if there's a big issue or something really pressing, we'll meet. But if not, we're thinking we'd like to try, at least for right now, every other week. We are meeting next week, and then I believe the week after is Thanksgiving week anyway. So we weren't going to meet then. Yeah, so we'll be meeting the 13th, and then again on the 27th for, for November. For December, that means we would meet on the 11th. And I don't want to go any further than that, because if we skipped a week, we'd be the 25th, and I know we're not going to meet then. But we can see about the 18th.
I'd recommend that we meet on the 18th, because it would be, unless we do something middle of a week, we'd be at least two, two plus weeks.
Right, that's what I want to say. That's why I didn't want to go any further than committing to the 11th. And then we'll see what happens the rest of the time. We also, just for the next couple weeks, we have been meeting our workshops on Thursdays from four to six. But the next two weeks, we need to change. And those meetings will be from four to six on Wednesdays. Those are always open meetings. They are workshops where the board is allowed to talk to each other. We're not allowed to make decisions, but we, it gives us a chance to talk about anything that anybody's working on, issues that we might have, and then come together on that. So for this Wednesday and the following Wednesday, we'll meet on Wednesday instead of Thursday. And those will be posted, but just want to give those updates. Last week, we appointed Kevin McManahan to the Shellfish Committee, but we didn't have the paperwork. We do have that now, and so we're going to sign. He's already been approved. Another appointment that we need to make is Gay Wagner's, and I don't think we approved it last week, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve Gay Wagner as the election. But it used to be Carolyn Schaefer, and she's out of town. So Gay has volunteered to do that. So, second, all in favor? Okay. And last week, we also had talked, we had a sort of an unofficial resignation from Julie Fasson from the Shellfish Committee, and she has submitted her official resignation to that committee. So I don't know that we need a motion to accept her resignation, but I'll make one anyway. So do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Jeff, I have on here a CD at first. You had, you were going to just check it out and let us know who gave you permission to check it out. So do you have any update on that or not? And if not, we'll-
Just going back, we, the CD retired. The money went into cash, went in the checking account.
And that's what it is right now?
That's right. So there's no, that CD is gone.
Right. So we're going to investigate whether there's anything else that we could either go back to the CD or-
No, it's more of a long-term discussion, because there was no good reason to renew the CD, because we got, we're getting a very good rate of interest currently with the checking account. Does sound like down the road, we need to be looking again at how we want to manage our money. But that was just what to do with that retiring CD we abolished.
All right, yep, yep. So I just wanted to follow through with that, or follow up with that, since we had asked you to do that. All right. We have sand in our community sand shed right now, and hopefully we won't need it for a while. But if I just proposed a sign right now, we talked about, we didn't come to any decision, but we talked about just having it available and having the sign up there. And we talked about limiting it to two five-gallon buckets per storm per household. And basically just putting a sign that that's what is available for anybody that wants to have it.
So that's the policy, two buckets per household.
Per household, yep.
For the entirety.
Per storm, per storm. Yep, yep. So anytime we have a storm, you know a storm's coming, that you can come and get a couple buckets. Yep. And I know Jim is going to be sort of monitoring that to see, you know, just to make sure, to try to get a sense for-
Usage.
Usage, because that's, you know, it is sand, the town owns the sand. And we're just, you know, when we started this, we were told that, wait, somebody might take it all or whatever else. We're hoping, and believe in the good faith of the community. So we're going to try it.
We're on a test.
Yep.
I put retail value at about $2 per five-gallon bucket. If you had to go over Quonset Hutt or over Nancy Hunt by it, you would pay about $2 per five-gallon bucket.
So grab an extra really isn't getting you much, except better muscles, maybe.
Well, you gotta have two, you gotta carry it. It's easier to carry two than to get one. There's no question about that.
Well, I have five-gallon buckets, and there's absolutely no way I can fill them. So I can have a five-gallon bucket and maybe get two gallons, and you can't-
Two half, two half five-gallon bucket.
Anybody that fills them that, that full and can move them deserves to be in some kind of special Olympics or something. So I, I, it actually like a motion from the, the board to, to say that this is what our policy is going to be for right now, and we'll just keep monitoring it. So do I have a second? A second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I'll work on getting that. Not going to worry about it today. Hopefully, nobody's coming and getting any sand yet.
Nobody's thought to get, it's been there over a week.
They haven't seen that it's there. Ruth is in denial still.
Well, that's-
It's not, it's not going to settle. And, and we will have more information on the wood. We're still working on that. We're still having a little bit of an area to clean up. I did post on the Facebook that if anybody wanted to donate to get ahold of me. We don't want people just throwing stuff there. And so we want to be really clear with that. And Richard, while I have you, I just, somebody came and asked for a cord of, of wood. And basically, what I'm looking at is if somebody needs help, we'll do what we can to deliver, or hopefully they can put it in their own car, because I've been delivering in my own car, and I'm hoping that they could do that. But it's not like we'll say, "Oh, we'll have a cord for you. We'll give you a carload or whatever we can," and try to keep supporting people. But it's not the same as going and calling somebody and saying, "Oh, I want to need a cord of wood," because we're not going to measure how much a cord is to give somebody. So maybe you can pass that on to Linda, because somebody did ask me about it.
Helping hands can go to the county-
Right.
And get a cord.
Right, but it costs. Yep.
And so, you know, that, but that's one cord per family, but that hasn't gone into effect yet, but-
Yep, yep. And this is to help out anybody who, you know, this is like an alternate heat source, so that if you're using that electric heater and, you know, your, your energy bill is going up, 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 that maybe using some wood instead would, would help out a little bit. But it's not like we're in the business of saying, "Oh, we'll deliver a cord of wood to anybody that wants it." That's not the goal. That was really just to help out anybody who really needs the help.
Yeah.
And I've asked them to contact me, because we are going to distinguish what is the green wood versus the dry wood. And we also have some pine out there that we probably need to mix a little, which is another reason why we don't want people just dropping things off.
Yeah.
So. Another, no, I think that was it for admin items. And then we have legal, two legal items. Anybody, anything else for admin before we move on to legal? Okay. Two items for legal business is just an update. The Longabody case is closed. We have signed the final paperwork. They have signed the final paperwork, and, and that is finished.
And paid the penalty.
And paid the penalty, yes. The second thing is, we are working on a junkyard permit. One of the things we've discovered that when we started looking at junkyards, the statute said that you needed to be permitted. And we realized we don't have a permit for you to fill out an application. So we're working on an application right now. We have a draft, and we're working with the three of us and, and the planning board, not the planning board, but the CEO, to, to come to agreement with what that looks like. And from there, then we can, if we find that somebody seems to be operating a junkyard, we then have something that we can give somebody and say, "Here's an application that you would need to fill out." So we're in the draft stages of that right now, but we just want to give you an update on that. Anything that either of you two wanted to add regarding that?
No.
No? Okay. We'll keep you posted when we have it all finalized and start to use it. Any other comments or feedback from anybody? Richard?
Just one information piece again. Lester Perry had his second cataract operation, and he was able to read the menu when we stopped for lunch on the way home. So with, you know, using my glasses, Rich Coventry and I went over to his house today and muddled up all the clothes and bedding that, you know, Lynn's going to wash his clothes, and then we'll take the bedding over to Roger Matt and get it laundered. So that's, you know, been cleaned up. And we've winterized the cabin so that we can shut the electricity off. So that's another bill that won't be, have to be paid. Because he's got, you know, based on his mortgage, he's got about 14 months left of money in his two accounts to pay his mortgage.
Okay. And Charlotte, none of that is to go into the news?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just want, I'm sure she knows, but, yeah. Any other thoughts or comments?
I wanted to do some, some sort of news, my old business. So a couple of things that I can talk to him, hoping I get some information from you guys as well. The Town Hall, the bathrooms were painted by Bailey Bartlett. So when you happen to be, if you're going voting tomorrow and you need to use the restroom-
Probably very pretty and colorful.
It's, it's, it's very tasteful. It's very tasteful. So, but I guess kudos to her for doing that. And the Town Hall Committee is working on, we had a vapor barrier in the crawl space underneath the building, because as you can see, if you go by the Town Hall, the, the paint job, which is some, one, two sides, is only like two, three years old, is already peeling bad. And so we have this real problem of moisture. So that's what the committee is trying to do. So the committee's doing some work. The one negative is that the flagpole was painted and put back up, but the line parted to, to the flag over the weekend. So we don't have a flag flying over the Town Hall for the election. I'm sorry. So that's a little bit of bad news. I, I just kind of curious, is there some, some stats we can get on the community resilience partnership plan, first one, in terms of the, the next steps? Are we all done with?
Well, we're done with the, with the round of sampling that we did with the, with the citizens. We've got 166 samples, as I recall.
Yep.
And we're meeting tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday. With our consultant. And we're going to be laying out the next steps. The next steps are likely to include long-term monitoring on a selected number of wells, and we'll have to try to decide geographically, where are the wells that we want to do long-term sampling. And the attempt would be to install an instrument that can be measuring solidity and measuring water height, and providing that data electronically to be recorded over at least a year's time, to see what an annual cycle looks like on these selected wells.
And, and also Carol is working on, starting to work on her report.
Yes.
Because that's the next, that's really the final thing, is the, the report. But that won't be for many months.
Yeah, she'll be presenting to us her findings on the 166 tests that have been run, whether there's a pattern to the findings, or whether there's anything to be learned from, from that. We'll know more about that up there.
Yep. And then, and then we'll have an update. Yep. All right. Anything else?
Last thing is that the Wright Landing House will have a, a new security system installed sometime this, this month. We will work it through with, with the History Committee and the helping hands that use the building, in terms of how we'll manage that and share responsibility for the, the security. Both, both use the building, so both need to be careful not to set off the alarm. So we'll, we'll go through a process of, of training, so that everyone who has access to the building knows how not to set the alarm off.
And who are you using?
Simply Safe is the supplier of the security equipment.
All right. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
A second?
All in favor? Okay.
Does it matter to you, you know, it's a handicap park, we're starting the Town Hall?
Yeah.
It could happen.
Is that anything that you care about, the reserve commission? Do you care about the parking there at the Town Hall?
Probably want to have a plane.
Let me down, Jeff.
No, I don't know.
Sorry, man.
Give me some feedback. What's your take on it?
No, I just think the Town Hall Committee can take responsibility for it.